All right, it's six forty-five. We're in the new city council chambers. So first thing I'll ask is everybody, please be patient with us as we figure out some of the ins and outs of our technology here, but it works very similar to where we were before. So I'm excited to be here. We will start our joint meeting first. We'll call it to order and we'll start with the pledge of allegiance. Okay, we'll test out the sound system a little bit here. We'll do introductions from my far right. Mr. Mace.
John Mace, Board of Finance.
David Mikowski, Board of Finance.
Glenn Heiser, Board of Finance.
Ron Burns, Board of Finance.
Jacqueline Olson, City Council District Two.
Sue Tyler, City Council District Two.
Eric Rosengren, City Council District One.
Cheryl Tebow, City District, City Council District Three.
Andrew Howe, City Council District Three.
Mark Peterson, Board of Finance.
Sebastian Panyoto, City Council District One.
Marie O'Brien, Board of Finance.
And then Mark, if you could say hello, I think Mark's the only one online.
Mark Whitford, Board of Finance.
Excellent. Oh, Craig? Where's Craig? There he is.
Craig Kazmika, Board of Finance.
Great, thanks. That is a full board. Very good. Alrighty, let's move right on to the agenda then. Number one is the approval of the minutes of the regular joint meeting on September twelfth, twenty twenty-three. Can I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Are there any amendments, changes, additions, or comments? All those in favor? Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Number two is the consent calendar. It's A through D, a little short of this month, which is very nice. Does anybody wish to withdraw anything from the consent calendar? All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
All those in favor? Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Number three, to transfer thirty-seven thousand five hundred fifty dollars from the general fund contingency account for the city match of the assistance to firefighters grant. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Number four is to make an additional appropriation of four hundred thirteen thousand forty-eight dollars within the special grants and donations fund for the assistance to firefighters.
So move.
Comments, questions? All those in favor? Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Number five is to transfer five hundred twenty-seven thousand five hundred forty-seven dollars from the general fund to the Board of Education as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
So move. Second.
Any comments, questions? All those in favor? Anybody opposed? Motion carries. And I apologize, Erica, I'm gonna go slower next time. We're gonna call out those that are doing the motion in second. And for the audience members, many of you know, we go through this meeting pretty quickly because all of this stuff has gone through our subcommittees, the Board of Finance in particular in this case, and these are pretty checkmark type things. So we're on to number six already, and Diane's gonna be the first one to go ahead and use our podium microphone. Is that on, Diane? We'll try. The little...
Is it green? Gotta push it pretty hard.
And as she gets there, she's gonna do our monthly revenue expense presentation.
So I'm inaugurating this, so we'll see how this goes.
Well, first of all, the camera worked well, so it is switching, so it's working pretty good.
Good. Well, good evening. Welcome to the new chambers. It looks great, and I'm sure it will get a long use over the next thirty, forty, fifty, maybe sixty years, right? As soon as the last one did. So a couple of things just to point out, you do have the report in front of you. Tax revenues are coming in as expected. Nothing to be concerned there. I do want to highlight a little bit, I'm just gonna digress for a second. A question did come up this morning about the tax collection and the billing process, and what the, what the tax collector's process is to collect delinquent taxes. So I thought this might be a good opportunity to just kind of like highlight it, just a brief, a couple-minute summarization of what she'd, how the tax office works. The tax collection process starts when this board approves the tax warrant. That warrant actually is the legal authority for her to issue the tax bills for July first. So July first, the tax bills go out, they become delinquent, August first, same thing in January, January first, February first, they're delinquent. Any person that fails to pay their taxes, the tax collector has to issue a demand and a delinquent notice for that. She is legally not able to go after and do a formal collection process until she has completed that process with the demand. Motor vehicle and the motor vehicle supplement list, just to let you know that anyone that is delinquent in their motor vehicle, that gets reported to the DMV, so people cannot register their vehicles when they need to renew their registration. And that is how a lot is caught. It used to be a two-year, two-year registration process, now it's a three-year, so there is a little bit of a lag that I know the tax collector has noticed, but she still does try to collect those on a regular basis anyway. Personal property, after the delinquent and demand notice go out, there are UCC liens that are filed with Secretary of State, and they are also referred over to the collection agency that she uses. So the collection agency does continue to try to collect on those. Real estate taxes, again, after the delinquent and the demand notices go out, those are referred to an outside agency with an attorney, liens are filed on the land records, and she also did say that anytime property owner tries to get a building permit, that also cannot happen if they have delinquent taxes. And then with regard to any vendors who might owe us, let's say we have a plow vendor that performs work for the city, if they owe taxes, that is another area where we do actually watch that. Also, again, the plow vendor is an example, but it could be any vendor that the city does business with. And just to, as an FYI, the tax collector's office does a great job. She has collected over the last five years between ninety-eight and a half to ninety-nine point two percent collections on the current levy, and that's really phenomenal for the tax levy that she has to collect. So I just want to put a good plug out there for her that she does a great job on that. So again, as you see these reports throughout the year, I give you a comparison to the prior year. We are very much in line with where we were last year at this point as well. Building permit revenues were at thirty-five percent, so slightly ahead. Conveyance taxes are at forty-three, so those are coming in strong as well. Investment earnings right now is at eleven percent of the budget, but that's through September. I do want to just say that, you know, interest rates have been going up over the last few months, as you know, and we've been able, as CDs and maturities happen, we've been able to invest at a higher rate. So right now, we're investing at around five percent for the laddered CDs that are renewing, so that's positive for this year's budget as well. And as you know, last year, we took in quite a significant amount in investment income. On the expenditure side, three months of the year are complete, so there's not very much of concern there. And then the auditors will be here a week from, two weeks from today, and they will be, begin their final field work. We will have at the next Board of Finance meeting, the allocation for the reserves, so we're gonna go through that and allocate some of the funds that we have at surplus to the Milwauk Stabilization Reserve Fund, the Equipment Building Syncing Fund, we do that every year, so that will be at the next Board of Finance meeting. And then the Capital Improvement and Strategic Planning Committee, just to change here, the meeting will still be on October twenty-fifth, but we've moved that to four o'clock. So that will be at four o'clock on the twenty-fifth. And one thing that we did different this year, I did ask all of the department heads that have projects to provide a status report on all of their capital projects, so I think that will help as the CIP committee is looking at the projects and trying to determine where, you know, what might, particularly for bonding, what might be coming down the road, because as you know, we don't bond everything the year it's approved, it takes a few years for that to happen. So I think that would be important for that committee to have. And then the only last thing, I did start working on the ARPA report, so we should have that, that will be due the end of this month. So that's my report, if anybody has any questions.
Thank you, Diane. Any questions from anybody here in the room? Go ahead, Marie.
How has the move of your office and staff been into the new City Hall space?
So we are not moving, our office is not moving, and actually, two weeks from today, we'll be moving. And they're excited to move in. They've seen their, their space and everything's new, and I think everybody's looking forward to it.
So two weeks from today is when the auditors begin as well?
They're starting the thirtieth, so it's two and a half weeks.
And I'll just use this to interject to make an announcement since we have such a large crowd too. So we have a temporary CO right now in City Hall, so the public spaces are open. We have a city council meeting obviously here, and people can walk through this public area of the building. We will start moving in, as Diane said, in October, late October. The registrar and clerk will not move until after the election. And we will also have a dedication on October twenty-first in the building, a rededication of the building that would be a public rededication at two o'clock on Saturday, the twenty-first. So just some general announcements. We'll say that in the council meeting too, but since people are here and paying attention, well, we'll do it twice.
I think everyone's looking forward to be back together, too. It's, it'll be nice.
They'll get some more time in the day instead of going back and forth. I know Diane and I are in different buildings, so that'll be good. What are the questions from in the room for Diane, if any? How about on Zoom, Mark or Craig?
Nothing there.
All right. Thank you very much. Is there any other business to come before us? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All those in favor? We're adjourned. We will start our first council meeting back here at some time, right at seven o'clock. We haven't done that in a while. Sure that there will be, actually. All right. We are going to start our city council meeting on Tuesday, October tenth, twenty twenty-three. Welcome, everybody, to the new city council chambers. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance. For our opening ceremony tonight, just want to make a couple of announcements. Before I do that, though, I think with all of the challenging times that we're seeing throughout the world in particular, and what's happened over in the Middle East, I would like everybody to take a moment of silence to think about all those that are suffering, not only in the Middle East, but even here. Thank you. Thank you very much. That's nice calming music for us all, too, that might stir us off, right? So the other announcement that I'd like to make is that the dais should be on. When we come up, we would like to start our discourse with civil discourse. I'm very proud that over the past couple of years, we've been very open to debate and to listen to people. I'll also ask that this is a city council meeting and that we focus on policy issues and we don't focus on people. We have opportunities to do that at debates and other things, but I really think that we should have good civil discourse. I also want to congratulate and thank a bunch of people here, and as Ed D'Amato Senior walks in, let's start first with the D'Amato Construction Company that really got us in here early, I will say, not just on time technically, but early. So we have a temporary CO in this building, which allows us to have our meetings here. We'll start moving in the end of the month. We will have a dedication for some of you new that came in on October twenty-first at two PM here, and we hope to have our permanent CO following that weekend and then start moving people back into City Hall. Importantly, for all of you, the clerk's office and the registrar's office through the election time will be in the temporary City Hall space right now. We'll start moving all the other departments back, and please pay attention to those schedules if you need to do business at City Hall. The other thing that I want to publicly do is thank not only the last two administrations who technically have come together, because this project started before this administration sat here. We got to have about four or five meetings here, which was kind of fun, and then we moved out, and it's great to be back at the end of that. But, you know, thank you to the previous administration for getting this going. The dedication and the plaque that's down there contains two administrations worth of not only the city council people and the, and the two past mayors, but also our Public Works Board members. So this project went through the Department of Public Works as a Public Works project, and so the other big thank you goes to many, many, and too many to name here, city employees who have stepped up and done great work. Ray Rogazinski and his team have managed this project from start to finish over the two administrations. Many people, and I see some of them back there, we recognized them at our town hall meeting, who have done a lot of work. I see Lindsay, I gotta say hello to Lindsay, because she's smiling back there, on all the little particulars, and it is amazing the amount of work and effort that goes in to bring a building like this together. So thank you, everybody. I appreciate that. And welcome to City Hall again. All right, number two on our agenda is approval of the minutes from the city council meeting on September, it was eleventh, right? It's not listed there, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Any comments, changes, additions? All those in favor? Anybody opposed? Motion carries. I know we have a pretty long list here of public participation in the room, and we have a very long list on Zoom. Reminder to everybody, when you come up, name and address for the record. We want to focus on policies, not people. That's a request from me, but either way, we are gonna time these, we are gonna give you three minutes. We've had a couple of months of these, and so if you can't say it in three minutes, I'll ask that you come make an appointment in the mayor's office and we can talk about it, because we've done that before, too. First on my list is Peter Kelly.
Mr. Kelly, sorry to interrupt. Zoom cannot hear you. Can you turn your mic on?
Should be green.
Thank you.
You're projecting very well here, little Peter.
Do you like me to start all over again?
No, we would like you to continue, and you have a little bit of time left.
So tonight, my list is, why haven't you done videos on these issues? Kabanta, where's that issue? After the election, this toxic issue evaporated into thin air, pardon the pun. Associated Springs, Barnes Group. We talked to the union head yesterday. They closed on September twenty-ninth, and the displaced workers are still waiting for a call from you. Blockbuster, you mentioned this in the twenty twenty-one campaign debate. How are these conversations going with the New York-based owner of that class? Kind of hard to get involved in private market situations, isn't it? You also seem to be using your city credit card in some interesting places. So much for fiscal conservatism, right? I will be filing a FOIA request for the backup paperwork for some interesting credit card charges, including twenty-eight dollars for the Shamrock Run registration, three hundred and thirteen for the Firefly Hollow Brewery on a Wednesday night, a seven-dollar girly Starbucks coffee at the casino, a hundred and sixty-four dollars, the Hidden Valley Miniature Golf, and this one's interesting, over twenty-two dollars at Ben &amp; Jerry's in Old Sabre. Are we getting at Ben &amp; Jerry's in Bristol? Are you recruiting them? I look forward to getting answers to my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Next on the list is Stacy Robirch.
This can be louder. I'd appreciate it, or I'll just talk louder. Stacy Robirch, sixty-one, Peppermint Lane. I'm here today to talk about vetting, lack of judgment, and basic common sense, specifically when it comes to appointments made by the current mayor and his council. Most in this room have heard the name Jennifer Van Gorder, but today, my focus is on Aaron Rosengren, who is currently sitting on the council, appointed by you, not voted in by the voters. He'll be on the ballot in November, running as an incumbent. In my hand, I hold some very concerning social media posts made, liked, or shared by Mr. Rosengren. I'll let you all take a look when my three minutes is up. These posts have a certain, how should we say, vibe to them, that vibe being, at the very least, insensitive to current events and those impacted, and at the most, downright racist, and a clear disdain for women. To the mayor, what vetting criteria is used by you and the Republican Committee when appointing people to represent your party and who are here to serve this very diverse community, you know, all heart Bristol? Do you ever look at their social media? A lot can be said about a person by the things they post, share, and like. We know about the Van Gorder posts on antisemitism, but Mr. Rosengren has posts referencing three percenters, which the Anti-Defamation League has labeled an extremist organization. He also has posts about African Americans and women. One says, quote, "Hot, common, angry women," and the man asking, "Are you on your period or something?" And was this next a joke about women's sports not being canceled? These sports apparently are cooking, cleaning, vacuuming, followed by your comment that says, quote, "Thank God, because my dinner isn't gonna cook itself. Always remember to be supportive and give them a nice smack on the ass and say, 'Good job, toots, but you missed a spot.'" Rods love that. Oh, but there's more. Then there's the one, "Any White Guy," twenty twelve. I guess you didn't like the color of Obama's skin. Or the one of my favorites, "Don't shoot, officer, I'm white." Is this the look you were going for when you appointed Jen and Eric? Does it even bother you? Do you think about people that can't see this stuff? It's a disgrace and an embarrassment to have these people representing this city, and even more concerning to know you strategically chose them without benefit of the voting public having their say. Fun fact, Mr. Rosengren is also a liaison to the Housing Authority, where we serve as some of our most vulnerable populations, people who come in all colors and genders. I am very concerned with this appointment as well. Mayor Cagiano, your leadership is seriously lacking, and we deserve better. Now, I'd be happy, I'd be copies, so I'll give them to you people first. Disturbing, to say the least. Anybody else who wants them?
Thank you very much. I will call up Deb Schur next.
Deb Schur, Sixth Pilgrim Road. Good evening. Last week, I attended two events where, Mr. Cagiano, you stated there is nothing you could do currently about Jennifer Van Gorder's seat on the BOE. You also stated that back in May of twenty twenty-one, when her antisemitic post was made, there was no fact-checking available on Facebook, correct?
Please continue.
For me, three red flags are immediately raised. The first is, if there was no reliable fact-checking available, why wouldn't you have used a process that just about every other business, municipality, or responsible leader utilizes before they hire or appoint? My goodness. The average Facebook user utilizes it before accepting a friend request. Vetting. In today's world of social media, it really is such a simple process, and clearly, with Ms. Van Gorder's antisemitic post, and now, in light of tonight's revelations about racism, found on Facebook posts of yet another of your mayoral appointments, it seems obvious that taking a spin through their pages could have prevented you from making these misguided appointments. Why didn't you? Which is where second red flag is raised for me. Maybe you did. Maybe you were, or still are, Facebook friends with these two appointees. Maybe you were aware of their blatant displays of homophobia, antisemitism, and now racism, and you're okay with it. Or to use one of your own go-to comments, maybe you think, that's just politics. Red flag number three. Besides the obvious embarrassment to our city, my own worry for my family and friends who are so marginalized by your appointments, it is your criteria in making those choices that is of my utmost concern, because voters do not have any say in these appointments. The electorate should feel confident in a mayor's ability to make good, sound choices, and we should be able to rely on his or her honorable judgment. But alas, your judgment is hindered, because perhaps, when it comes down to it, you just do not want to alienate a base of voters which got you elected in twenty twenty-one. Homophobes, antisemites, and racists. Oh my.
Thank you, Deb. Shelby Pons, you're up next.
Shelby Pons, one forty-three, Larkspur Lane. I don't have a speech prepared for tonight. I actually wasn't going to come and do public comment, but I spoke to my mother this afternoon, and she told me that you came to her house last night and door-knocked, and she said you were polite, so I thank you for being polite to her.
Always.
Yeah, and that's important. And I'm not upset.
Sorry about that. That was the previous person, sorry.
I'm not upset that you went to her house, or that you door-knocked, or that you talked to her. That's all great. I'm upset about some of the things that you said when you were at her house, and I want to tell you why. One of the things that you said was that she expressed that she was unhappy with the current state of racism in town, and you told her that. A different perspective that you have around this, and why, you know, you haven't been as vocal as you would have been, was because the police had asked you not to. And while I can appreciate and respect that the police probably tell you not to use the names of hate groups, right, because we don't want to give them notoriety, I don't believe that they're saying that you shouldn't denounce racism. And so that's, that's not something that I think should be said to people at their doors, because those are two very different things. The other thing that really upset me, that made me want to come and talk to you, was that you told my mother that the Board of Ed is a mess. Her daughter serves and volunteers and cares about kids and is working because she believes in what she's doing, and you gave her permission to be proud of me, which was nice, but to say that we're a mess is absolutely not true, and it's a narrative that I cannot ignore you saying anymore. You also said this to one of my board members, Maria Perro, at the senior center the other day, right to her, and it really hurt her feelings, because she too is volunteering, because she cares about kids in Bristol. We're both people who really care. It's not a game for us. This isn't politics, and we're passing policies, we're working in a bipartisan way, and whether or not that's how you wanted it, right? We're not being marginalized. It doesn't matter what political party we're on. There's six people making decisions based on their core values and what we think are best for kids, and I'd ask you, please, to stop spinning a narrative that's not true about us, because it's hurtful to our mothers. Thank you.
And with all due respects, I promise I won't call you a name as you walk away from the dais, but our next speaker is Sarah Sullivan. Sarah Sullivan. I, I won't call you names, which is what I promised that I wouldn't do for people as you walk away from the dais. Sarah, you're up.
Hi, everybody. Sarah Sullivan.
Hi, everybody. Sarah Sullivan, one fifty-five Ashley Road. I was at a recent candidate forum where the mayor said that we have from three hundred to five hundred new businesses that are springing up. I think that's a deceiving statistic in a campaign year, because they're not brick-and-mortar businesses. What are they? Are they people working Uber, side hustles from home? But I do want to talk about some of the new businesses that have sprung up during your administration. We have a total of thirteen vape shops, and this doesn't include the stores, like convenience stores, that sell them. So according to my research, we have more vape shops than your friend Aaron Stewart in New Britain. And I'll quickly run through them. One of them is actually a franchise, Smoking Eighth. They have two locations on Farmington Ave. Smoking Vape Shop, Farmington Ave. Vape Light inside Platinum Pond on Middle Street. Four Twenty Vape on East Main Street. Avalon Smoke Shop, Main Street. Discount Tobacco and Vape. Leo's Vape Shop on Main Street. Bristol Smoke Shop on Pine Street. Light It Up on Lake Ave. Hayes Vape, Middle Street. Jordan's Market and Smoke Shop, Burlington Ave. Gas Man Vape Shop, one eighty Riverside Ave. Do you think that these businesses add to a positive quality of life in Bristol? I certainly don't. Also, you have touted the many booming restaurant and quick-serve restaurants that we have in Bristol. Unfortunately, many establishments have went under. And I'm not sure what your administration has done to help them. So I'll just go on and say which ones. One Fifty Central, Better Half Brewing, Firefly Brewing, Crystal Diner, Vivaldi's Firehouse Subs, Golden Pagoda, Boston Market, Maryland's Casa Blend, Route Six Nutrition, Bites and Brew, and Nana's Deli. I think the Bristol public deserved to have an honest conversation about this, not just the salesman version of what you want people to believe. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Mike Arasenko, you're up next.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
For the record, Mike Arasenko, pretty bummer place here in the great city of Bristol. I'm here tonight as a father. My son Alex is a very special little man. He was born at twenty-nine weeks. He was on life support for ten days. He spent eight weeks in the NICU, and I didn't even get to hold my son. And for seven days. He's four years old. He says about five words. So this Board of Education thing is very important to me. So as I begin, I want to personally thank Councilman Howe, Councilman Rosengren, and Councilwoman Tebow for standing up for what's right and doing what's best for our schools and standing up for my little Alex. I wish there were more elected officials who cared about our schools and my son like you guys do. Mr. Mayor, I've been pretty vocal about my disdain over the selection of Jennifer Van Gorder over Rob Parente for the Board of Ed. I'm having a hard time understanding your selection. As a mayor, you're supposed to always want what's best for the city of Bristol. Let's compare them to my education, shall we? Rob Parente has dedicated his entire life to helping those with special needs, like my little man. And to my knowledge, Jennifer does not have a background in education. And here's some quotes for you. This one's from Jennifer. I believe there's an epidemic of kids coming out as bisexual, or whatever, just to fit in. That's from the Bristol Press. Rob Parente, he says, "I always tell parents to make sure your child gets invited to their first birthday party. I always make sure the students have what they need. That is what I do. It is my purpose and life." You've heard the speakers tonight talk about the antisemitic meme. You all are aware that she was banned from the Green Hills School parent page on Facebook for her behavior with parents and teachers. I'm here to tell you tonight, I don't care if Alex is gay or bisexual. I care, Mr. Mayor, that he is self-sufficient. What keeps me up at night is the realization that someday I'm gonna be gone, and my son is gonna need adult resources. A government-funded home. And it keeps me up. It's really, it really bothers me. And I really.
Please, let's have some respect. Continue, Mike.
Next, I'd address some things about Councilwoman Tyler, because I mostly put the blame for this mess on her. I can't understand why a sitting councilwoman would want to insert herself on a BOE decision. Councilwoman Tyler, are you aware that your district alone, there are five hundred and fifty students receiving special education services in our school system? Over five hundred and fifty. How many of those families did you reach out to regarding the open seat for the BOE? I think the answer is probably none, because had you spoken to them, you would have been behind someone like Rob who understands their child. You wrote an email endorsing Jennifer, and I found some of the wording troubling, to say the least. You spoke about how Jennifer is running for the seventy-ninth again, and how this seat on the BOE will give her political cred. I'm telling you, my little Alex, his development, he's not a pawn to be used for political cred. The residents of Bristol should know that I have been speaking out against this, that I have been very critical of Councilwoman Tyler. So should mean her response about me speaking out, wanting what's best for my son and those with special needs, is to seek legal action. I have it right here. I give it to the press.
And Mike, if I can just ask you to kind of wrap up, please, your three minutes is up.
Tell me, Mr. Mayor, is it acceptable for elected officials to seek legal action against residents for speaking out what's best for their child? I know you know the answer. Every Bristol resident should know that Councilwoman Tyler is this for herself and herself alone. She never do what's best for you and best for your district. And finally, Mr. Mayor, wrapping up, I would like to request a motion be made here tonight to censure Councilwoman Tyler over intimidation by an elected official for seeking legal action against a resident, which, by the way, I am an Army veteran. I should remind all of you that you are up there today because of people like you who answered the call for our country. Thank you.
Thanks for your service, Mike. Brian Cohen, you're up next. Brian, name, and I can't quite read the address here, so you, you give me the whole thing.
I'm having a tough time writing that.
That's all right. We rushed it, I think, too, so.
My name is Brian Cohen, two eighty-four Route Six, Chaplain, Connecticut. I'm a Republican, all right? And I'm here, nothing to do with politics. Sorry about that.
Yep. And I don't know if you heard my admonition earlier. We would like to focus on policy and things that come before this board.
You got it. Go.
Okay.
During the summer, I spoke to a number of citizens in Bristol. They were equally offended about a number of pictures that are on the Bristol Housing Authority Facebook page. The BHA is a promoted partner of the city of Bristol. You have a liaison. Initially, it was Andrew Howe, and then Mr. Rosengren took over. And during the summer, a number of pictures did come down, as they should have never been put up in the first place. They were offensive in many different ways. Oddly enough, a group still remains, and some of the worst ones. There is no other housing authority in the state of Connecticut that has Facebook pages that has any children on them at all. You guys had over three hundred of them. Kids sucking candy, playing with candy. Kids inappropriate dress. No other city has pictures of kids, but you guys had a bevy of them. You even keep the picture of Gary Shafford in those buildings. Gary Shafford, because you should all know, got busted because he was bragging. Busted because he was bragging about bath time. That's how he got caught. And yet, his picture remains. Now, before I go, I do want to ask you something. August twenty-eighth, you guys had your meeting. Right? In the group of pictures, Gary Shafford was in that room. You were sitting right next to him. Quickly, those pictures were deleted. Those four pictures were deleted, the ones of Gary Shafford. Well, the only way I really can do this is just ask you, not as a politician, but as a man, as a father. Would you ever allow yourself to be seated in the presence of that guy while he dresses Republican in your town?
Yeah, I, I don't think this is a time to answer those questions, but I am seated here with everybody, and I, yes, I will sit with anybody, as I have quite often. Anybody. So your, your, your time is expiring. You have fifteen seconds. I do want also just give you one piece of information, Brian. We are liaisons to the Bristol Housing Authority. The city of Bristol doesn't have control of their website or their Facebook page. I appreciate that information, and I was not aware of that, so I do appreciate bringing that to our attention. Thank you. There you go. There's your time. Yeah, that's the timer. Morris Ripley-Pattin, you're up, you're up next.
Morris Patton, forty-nine Field Street. Mr. Mayor, I'll try to keep this pretty quick. If I may, I think Mike Irshango's comments were heartwarming. That, that, that hit. So it really changes the tone of some of the comments. So I'd like to just publicly thank him for that. I wanted to comment on the recent WTIC debate that you held, or yourself and Scott Rosado held, at the restaurant across the street. And I know at one point there, when I was listening to it, you were asked a question about the racist issue in Bristol. And you pivoted. And I appreciate where you went with that. However, what you did was bring up the Ken Kacane administration. Right? You took the former administration to task for not creating an ordinance around people who commit atrocities in City Hall. And salute to all of you for doing such. But let's also keep in mind, and I can't believe that you didn't bring this up. In twenty-seventeen, when we knew that that mayor was committing sexual atrocities and harassment in City Hall, you were the Republican Town Committee Chair who endorsed him for mayor, right? You signed that paper.
I'll answer your question. I also denounced him.
Okay, that, that was you. You, you made him the candidate that year.
Oh, no, no, I did not, actually. I was not the RTC Chair when that happened. I was, I was nominated as the RTC Chair right after he was nominated, but I was part of the RTC.
Do I stand corrected? Appreciate that.
Yep.
But now, obviously Bristol, and I know you don't want this to be personal, and it should not be. But again, like I said two months ago, racism is never a personal, it's never a political thing, it's a human thing. So right now, you have someone that's putting themselves out there as an antisemite, serving on a Board of Ed in a month with no competition. That's because of you. You did that. When you're asked about her, you defend her, you pivot. You don't defend the children of Jewish faith. You don't defend children of color. You don't defend, don't say anything about LGBTQ plus kids, the children that she's going to make life harder for. You defend her. Well, I personally have fundamental disagreements with Councilwoman Tebow and Councilman Howe. And I've probably never complimented you guys in public before. I'd like to do that tonight. Because I do appreciate your denunciation of her. Bristol needed to hear that from people who sit in positions like you have. So you separating yourself from what Jeff has given us is admirable. And I mean that from the bottom of my heart. But what I don't get is why everybody's still silent on Ms. Tyler. We all know that she's the reason that we have Jen Van Gorder. We've all seen email. If I've seen it, I know you guys have seen it, where she threatens action against anyone that speaks ill of Jen Van Gorder. We all have that. So what are we doing there? We know who created the problem that we're dealing with right now. To get to a healing point, you got to deal with the source. So just please think about that as we move forward these next three weeks. And then, super quickly, I just want to acknowledge something you guys may not know much about. My friend Scott Rosado and myself, last month, after the whole white supremacy exhibition down in Forestville, you may know, there were groups that were coming to Bristol. It was getting very, very, very ugly online. They didn't want to talk to city council. They didn't want to talk to mayor. I want to applaud Scott. We spent a lot of time talking to Chief Gould, a lot of time on the phone with those groups, midnight calls, seven AM calls, to get them to not come to Bristol and do what they were planning. So I just think that's one of those things that people don't know about, but it should be acknowledged.
I appreciate that. Thanks. That is all I have on the list from city council chambers. Is there anybody else within chambers that would like to speak? How about anybody that is on Zoom? Anybody wish to address the city council? All right, hearing none, we will move on to our regular agenda items. Number four is announcements. I'm gonna start on my left this time. Go ahead, Sebastian. And by the way, introduce yourself to the new city council chambers. I forgot to do that earlier.
Sure, Sebastian Panyoto, City Council, District One. And I know we talked a little bit with Diane about the move and how this process has been, but I want to thank all the city employees, all the department heads, and all the staff for having patience and being in temporary facilities, being split up. This room is beautiful. I can say that. And walking in, it was very nice. I haven't seen the entirety of the building. But everyone that worked on the building, I see some of those faces also. I really appreciate all the work, all the work of the Public Works Board and Ray. So I just really wanted to say that from the bottom of my heart. Thank you to all the city employees for having patience with, with the process of the new city hall. As far as announcements go, I do have one for the New England Carousel Museum. Their Through the Looking Glass Gala will be on Saturday, November fourth, from seven to eleven PM. Tickets for the event are one hundred dollars. They're eighty-five dollars if you're a member. More information is at the carouselmuseum.org. There will be food and drinks and a band. The dress is Victorian era or black tie. And that's at the Carousel Museum, ninety-five, ninety-five Riverside Avenue. So the carouselmuseum.org for more information.
Jackie, go ahead and introduce yourself too, please.
Jacqueline Olson, City Council, District Two. I have a few announcements. Sunday, October fifteenth, is the All Abilities Art Auction at St. Andrews Church on Stafford Avenue from six, four to six. I hope that people will go out and support. I just want to remind also that the leafbag pickup begins Monday, October sixteenth to Friday, December first. The Senior Center is hosting a craft fair Friday, October twentieth, and Saturday, the twenty-first, from ten to three. And on Wednesday, October twenty-fifth, from four to six, they are having their annual Halloween party. Tickets are five dollars, and they're on sale now at the Senior Center. St. Stanislaus Church is having a pig roast dinner on Saturday, October twenty-eighth, at five PM in the church hall. The cost is twenty dollars, and proceeds will benefit the youth ministry. Tickets can be purchased by contacting the rectory or Debbie Sousa at eight six zero eight seven four nine nine three nine. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Andrew, introduce yourself and announcements.
Right, something down. Andrew Howe, District Three. I have a couple from, the first is from the Veteran Strong Center. It's holding its annual Whiskey for Warriors event, being held at the Doubletree on November tenth from six to ten PM. Price is seventy-five dollars a person, includes whiskey and wine tasting, buffet dinner, cash bar, swag bag, raffles, and an entertainment. Tickets can be purchased at the Veteran Strong Center at two forty Stafford Ave, or you can call them at five eight four six two five seven. And the school readiness has, there's an update for us that the Bristol Child Development Center has two toddler openings for pre-K full day. And the academy has multiple time slots that are for all part-time slots for two and a half hours a day. If you're ready to enroll your child, you can reach out to these slots through our Board of Education. And then my last one, we got to see Rich Theriot at the Vets Board. He and the Bristol Brass and Wind Ensemble, featuring the Bristol Corral, presents the duty, honor, and country under the direction of Richard Theriot. That will be held Sunday, November fifth at three PM. It's free admission at the Rockwell Theater at Bames. As always, with their free admission, they're always looking for donations. They're always welcome. So they usually are a great show, so please, I hope you can take a look at it and watch it. That's it.
Thank you, Andrew. Cheryl?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm Cheryl Tebow, City Council, District Three. We've got some great events coming up here in town, and I'm gonna say the Halloween Spookedacular is coming on Saturday, twenty-eighth. This is through the city arts and culture and the Parks Department. There's going to be a lot of activities down on Memorial Boulevard. I'm not doing that right. There's going to be functions, things for adults to do. There'll be a Witches Brew Tent, and there'll be adult beverages in there. But it's mainly the kids are gonna have a ball. There'll be some pumpkin decorating. There'll be vendors. There'll be trick-or-treating. So everybody's encouraged to wear a costume. There'll be story circles, and there'll even be a special effects makeup demo on how to put on mummy makeup. If you want to enter the pumpkin carving contest, you bring your best carved pumpkin down there. The voting, the winner will be announced at eight thirty. It's just, if you bring a pumpkin, you gotta bring the pumpkin home. So that's on the twenty-eighth. It's from three to ten PM at Bames. And that night at the Rockwell Theater is the Rocky Horror Picture Show. There's no prop bags, and I mentioned before, this is rated R, so it's not suitable for children under twelve. Um, doors open at five thirty. There's a pre-show, which I hear you don't want to miss. Those, that begins at six fifteen and the movies, um, the show starts at seven. Tickets are only sixteen dollars and fifty cents. Tickets are also on sale for the Billy Joel Experience, which will be in November, I believe the sixteenth, and tickets are thirty-six fifty. Lastly, we just found out that due to the sellout, practical sellout of the John Beardsley Elvis Christmas Show, which is in December, a second show, a matinee show will be held on the Sunday following at two o'clock. Tickets are not on sale yet. They will be by this weekend. So if you're, you know, I've had a lot of people tell me they couldn't get their tickets or the great seats. Be ready to buy your tickets this weekend. Uh, that will be posted. I'd like to, um, also congratulate our new Miss Mums. Um, at the Mum Festival, one of the nicest events, one of the most, um, heartfelt events to watch is the crowning of Miss Mum. And Miss Chrysanthemum is Madison Lamar. Her mom's actually in the audience, so congratulations, mom. Junior Miss Mum is Gianna Fabrizio. And Little Miss Mum is Kylie Varian. So congratulations to those three young ladies. If they do have the job that our previous young ladies did, we're in for a treat because um, these ladies take their duties to heart and they're already thinking of service projects to give back to the community. So if you see them out and about, please congratulate them and you know, find out what they're up to and help, help them out, volunteer. Lastly, um, well, two, I thought of another one, but the Salvation Army just posted that they're registering families who have needs both for food help for Thanksgiving and Christmas and for Christmas toys. So it's open to Bristol residents only. You must bring ID. You also need to show birth certificates for children under twelve. They only go twelve and under and proof of your address. You can register in person at the Salvation Army during the day from nine thirty to twelve thirty, Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, October sixteenth through November third. In evenings, Thursday only, five to seven on October nineteen and twenty-sixth, November two and November nine. I do have this posted on my Facebook page. It has been shared to Bristol Talks. So if you know somebody and you didn't catch the dates, please have them call me and I can relay that information. And just lastly, I just want to do a reminder for all those voters who used to vote at the Elks. Okay, and this is really District, um, A three announcement. The Registrar's Office has done a fabulous job getting the word out, but do not go to the Elks to vote. You are now going to Bames. So if you know somebody in that area, it's a lot of people who live on Federal Hill and such, please remind them to go to Bames and not the Elks. Okay? Thank you.
Thanks, Cheryl. Eric, you're up.
Eric Rosengren, City Council District One. A couple of things. So the last regular farmer's market will be held Saturday, October fourteenth, starting at ten AM and going till one. Uh, it's gonna be on Hope Street. Make sure you get your local goodies, support nonprofits, and get some amazing sweet corn. The corn is actually very good this year. There may be a special farmer's market right before Thanksgiving if the vendors show enough interest updates to come. Bristol Burlington Health will be offering a suicide prevention training, QPR, on October seventeenth from four to five. It's only an hour. It's a really good class. You can sign up by calling eight six oh five eight four seven six eight two. Also Bristol Connecticut Pride, everyone is welcome. This is gonna be at the Good Shepherd Church. Uh, that's five, uh, eight fifty-one Stafford Avenue in Bristol. There's a pride circle, uh, October twenty-one, twenty twenty-three, and I believe she said five o'clock. I, don't quote me, I, she just
Six PM.
Is it six? Was it? Is it five? Thank you. Um, so that will be five to eight. They're gonna, if it's indoor, they, she said there's gonna be games and dancing, singing. Uh, outdoors, they'll have a fire pit. And just everybody can get together. Everybody's welcome, no matter what. That's all I have.
Sue?
Uh, Sue Tyler, Council District Number Two. Uh, so the first thing I want to just remind everyone of is our vigil that will be held on this Thursday night at seven o'clock. Um, right across the street from the Police Department. Maybe the mayor can expound on the parking situation. So that's number one. Number two is, uh, we have a landlord breakfast that's being held on Tuesday, October twenty-fourth. This is in response to the housing crisis that we are experiencing. And there is a landlord breakfast. Um, this is supported by the city of Bristol CBDG Funds. And it's, um, a combination of, uh, St. Vincent de Paul, Journey Home, Veterans Strong, our Bristol Social Services, and the Bristol Senior Center are all coming together. And this breakfast is being held from eight to ten AM over at Mulligan's, which is at the Paquabic Golf Course. Um, this is a free breakfast and it is open to all of our landlords and our real estate professionals and investors who do work with landlords. This is an opportunity for landlords to come and to get some, um, great information and some resources available to them through these different organizations if they so choose to, um, rent to some of our most vulnerable clients and residents here in Bristol. And this is open to all landlords, not only in the city of Bristol, but also around the city of Bristol. And again, that's, uh, October twenty-fourth, eight to ten. We do need, um, RSVP. So if anybody needs that information, it is also on my Facebook page or they can see me. Rolling over into just a, a quick reminder, this is Mental Health Awareness Month. And there is, I, I don't think enough people know this, um, but, uh, phone number, nine eight eight. That is the suicide and crisis lifeline. Um, and you can either call that or text that number. And I actually tried it on as a text message just to make sure that, um, it was valid and they answered right away. So uh, just kind of keep that in mind for anyone that you know who might need some help. Um, also, October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And though this is most common in women, this also affects men. And just a quick reminder to October is the month to get your screening done, get your mammograms, and make sure that all of those people that you love do the same.
Great. Thanks, Sue. Uh, so let me just pick off on one of yours first. So the vigil on Thursday night will be in front of the Bristol Police Department. There is an awful lot of parking around the area, but the road will be closed off from Laurel Street all the way over to Center Street. So we are gonna have to do a little bit of walking. The parking lot across from City Hall will probably not be available unless you get here really early, uh, and all the parking around here will be a little bit difficult. Um, there is parking behind us, but actually I think it's being designated for press and others that will be here early. Uh, and then there is parking at the current City Hall where we have now the temporary City Hall. And, uh, there's parking all and around many of the businesses. And thank you to many of the businesses who I reached out to. So we are looking. Ray, you're pointing. What am I missing? Oh, I did mention that. I just, when you just pointed, that's exactly, you had me queued up right away. So the parking garage behind us is available. Uh, obviously, um, you won't be able to get in the front parking here, but you can, uh, enter that on Meadow Street, correct, Ray? So our new parking garage is, is open for that. Please, uh, come with your candles and, uh, that will be a very solemn celebration. The other reminder with that is if you have not turned on your blue lights yet or put your can, your blue bulbs out and you can still get them, please do that. And, uh, those were our requests from our police. So I appreciate the respect that we have for them.
Mayor, did I see somewhere that that was also gonna be, um, broadcast on Facebook Live?
I believe we are gonna do it live as well, probably on the mayor's page or, or one of the other pages so that people will be able to see it from home. It's a, a short presentation. It's really, uh, started because when the police saw that organically a year ago, the night after the incident, the organic visual, the vigil that, uh, was created, they kind of wanted to recreate that in remembrance of the fallen officer. So that's their choice and, uh, I hope that people will come and honor that. Um, the only other announcement I think that I had was I got a letter today from the state of Connecticut to let us know that Bristol ceased to be a design, designated as a distressed municipality in twenty twenty-three. I think that, uh, shows a lot of positive signs from the economic and community development standpoint. We will receive benefits for the distressed benefits programs through October twenty twenty-eight. And I don't want to get too excited because sometimes cities come in and out of that, but we definitely are pleased that things are going well in the city. I don't think I have any other announcements. Does anybody else have other announcements that we forgot? Alrighty, uh, number five is the consent calendar. A through I, does anybody wish to remove anything from the consent calendar? No, I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Howe is first, Tebow is the second. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Number six, A Committee Reports. Uh, A is a Salary Committee. Cheryl, if you can take that one?
Yes, um, I would like to bring a motion to the table uh, to approve a change to the part-time position of Administrative Assistant Legal, Local Two Thirty-three, Salary Code Six, to full-time effective October eleventh, twenty twenty-three, and to refer to the Board of Finance for funding.
Great. Can I get a second? That's Howe for the second. Uh, Cheryl, just if you want to give us a little bit more from the Salary Committee and we'll, we'll have questions and comments.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this position, uh, we had a great discussion, is expanded mostly due to the direct result of the state unfunded mandate that we had to create the Fair Rent Commission. The notices, filings, the reporting that's required from these meetings and the hearings do create a sizable increase in the workload. While at this time, there has only been a few active cases, um, as word of the commission is being shared, it's likely and predicted to become far more active and far more busy. By increasing the hours now, we'll be well prepared. In the interim, this position will also assist with the code enforcement filings, notices and reports. We've recently added a new compliance officer and there is an expected increase being brought through the process. And I expect our Corporation Council will find plenty of work to keep this person busy. Um, the additional cost is expected to be about twenty-one K per year before benefits. And the Salary Committee, um, felt this was a wise investment to help us stay in compliance.
Great. Anybody else on the Salary Committee want to add? Or subtract? No? Uh, any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Um, Cheryl, why don't you continue along? Do you have any other committee reports that you want to give us?
I do. Um, just, uh, I'm gonna spend a, um, a couple of minutes on the, um, Rockwell Theater again, the city arts and culture. Um, one of the things that we recognize is in order to really get word out, in order to attract quality ads, in order to market this how we want, we need sponsors. And so a sponsor opportunity package was created, which is available now. Mine is black and white. I can get a color one to anybody who'd like one. But it goes from gold sponsor and what's included with that, um, from logos to tickets to the shows. I mean, there's at least ten items that benefits that come with the gold, silver, bronze, event sponsor. Each of these ranging all the way down so that we can bring more opportunity to Bristol, attract people downtown. Once I have restaurants and stores and all this, you know, peop, what is it? Build it and people will come, or do people come and then you build it? Either way, we want this theater to be used. And this is a way we felt that will help area business get exposure, help the theater. And so, um, this packet is available. It looks like this. It's about six pages. It will be on the parks page. It will be on the city arts page. It'll be on the all heart page. So there's many places that businesses can find it. And, uh, those of us on the committee will be reaching out to all the businesses in the area. So don't be surprised if we door knock on you. On Public Works, uh, I did want to share because there's been a lot of questions about what we do with the funds that we collect from nippers. Okay, you know, the little bottles that um, there's, the fee is collected at the sale, but they're not redeemable. And so the city has given the funds and the efforts are going into, you know, helping to keep the city clean in addition to, um, the kits that were passed out at the farmer's market. Lindsay and her team, they put them together. They were well received. They had a a grabber so you could pick something up. They had a safety vest, a first aid kit. Um, so some of the funds were used for that. And now, um, the decision was made to prove by Public Works Committee that we are going to go focus on dog waste stations. Um, they'll be installed in the parks. Okay, so that if a person comes to the park and they forget their bags or you know, maybe they see it and are ashamed to say I should pick up after my dog, which by the way, ordinance did increase the fine. Thought I'd throw that out there. But this will be the next step. And then also anybody that licensed their dog can get one of those clip-on ones. You know, that you can put on your leash and pull a bag out and put a, um, put, uh, a replacement set in. So that's the next step that's gonna happen with some of those nipper funds, all going to reduce litter and reduce issues in the community. I was just gonna quickly share and I don't want us to go super late, but um, Ray Rogosinski, who's our Director of Public Works, does a wonderful job in summarizing and reporting to the committee on various aspects. And in the last meeting, he gave us a great review of the solid waste collection. Okay? Um, so I'm just, if you bear with me, may I share a few facts? Because I don't think people realize what a big trash issue there is. I do. I, I, I worked for Covanta for fourteen years. So I know more about trash than anybody ever wants to know. But this, they service seventeen thousand eight hundred and seventy-six pro, um, properties collecting from over twenty thousand to twenty-two rubbish barrels. Okay, re, and this is weekly. This is weekly. The re, the curbside collection for recycling is nineteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-one barrels on the bi-weekly basis. Right now, um, and this is real huge. The city disposes of our waste through Covanta and the Bristol Resource, um, this operating committee at a cost of seventy dollars and forty cents per ton. The going market rate out there for other communities, especially with the closure of the Hartford plant, is a hundred and five dollars per ton. So having this facility in our community is providing an, an economic benefit that a lot of people don't realize. Um, this contract goes through twenty thirty-four, so there's plenty of time left on it. Um, the next, the next group will have to worry about that, uh, negotiation. The recycling does go to a private processing facility located in Hartford. And right now, due to the market, we're still paying to dispose of recycling. I just wanted to share some of these things, um, and since, and if you don't mind, I'm gonna, uh, go into, because Covanta was mentioned earlier. I just want to say that we've been talking to Covanta quite a bit since the start of the administration. The, um, the big issue at the time was the medical waste, which was an agreement that was signed prior to this administration or anybody at this day is coming on board. At this point, DEEP is still reviewing that permit. They have not moved. Um, so we constantly ask them what the status is, but it's not going anywhere right now. They're faced with a major waste disposal issue in the state. So this is way on the back burner. But I will tell you that Covanta has done a multimillion dollar upgrade of their APC, Air Pollution Control Equipment by expanding and replacing this device called the Bag House. Actually, there's one on each unit. Um, in addition, they have put in the software so that you, from your computer or your smartphone, and Sue, I don't know if it's active yet. Do we have the date that it's active yet for the Sims?
No, it's actually changed a little bit, but it's very soon.
Very soon. You're gonna be able to pick up your smartphone and see the continuous emission monitoring, what they call Sims, and know what they're putting out there for NOx, SOx, you know, particulates and so forth. And these are things that we have really pushed for them to do so that they can be responsive to their host community. So I want you to know that, um, we have been working with Covanta and they've been a good partner. And so in addition to saving over thirty-five dollars a ton, they're responsive in this respect. So I just wanted to share that. And again, thank Ray for a great report. The Public Works Committee meets the third Thursday of the month. Our meetings are online. You're welcome to attend. They do go about three hours, but you all are welcome.
I just want to make a clarification, if you don't mind. Cheryl, you did a really good job on the SIMs. I want everybody to know, first of all, too, that the SIMs or the Continuous Emissions Monitoring System is active all the time. So Covanta is doing that already. The change that they worked with us on is to go ahead and report that proactively, even though DEEP does not require that. So that is something that we wanted to make sure that it was more transparent for the public. So I just want to clarify that, but you nailed it, and I think it's great stuff.
And SIMs is reported. If there's any exceedance, DEEP knows it at the same time.
Shut down as well, depending on what it is.
But I just wanted to share those facts. I didn't plan to talk about Covanta. I already had my highlights, but thank you for letting me share those.
Great, thanks. Eric, do you have any Committee Reports?
I just have a quick one from Housing. They were doing some repairs on some, some buildings and some, some properties, general maintenance and upkeep. So they're, they're moving ahead on that. There's the Bonnie Acres where they want to change the traffic pattern because they're having people going the wrong way. So they're working with, I believe, Bristol PD Traffic and also with Public Works to get everything finalized. It is moving along. They're waiting on signs and a couple of other things.
Excellent.
Other than that, I have nothing.
And thank you just for public clarification here, since it was brought up earlier. Eric, you're two months, I think, on, on BHA, and we had a hard time getting a liaison to that meeting because it conflicts with a lot of our meetings. So thank you, Eric. Sue, you're, you're first up on the Ordnance Committee.
Okay, first, this is an ordinance that we have already, we, we mentioned and discussed at City Council, and we sent it back to ordinance last month for a public hearing. We did hold that last week at the Ordnance Committee. So first, I would like to make a motion to waive the reading.
So Sue makes a motion. Give a second.
Second.
Tebow gets the, gets the second. All those in favor? Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, so now I would like to make a motion. I hereby move that Section five dash twenty-one dot two permits and permit fees of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bristol, Connecticut, is hereby amended to read as follows. I further move that the city clerk publish said amendments and additions to the Code of Ordinances, and that they become effective upon the expiration of fourteen days from the date of their publication in a newspaper of general circulation in the City of Bristol.
Wait a second. Tebow? Any other comments or questions here? I know this has gone back and forth quite a bit. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anything to add? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. And Committee Reports, Sue?
So we'll stick with the, the Building Department. So we'll talk about code enforcement. On Saturday, the mayor and I went out to a clean and lean. This was probably the first one in many months. And it was actually the first of many to come in the next couple of months. And I, I do not believe, I don't know what the follow-up was this morning.
Lionel got ninety-nine point nine percent done before seven AM this morning, and we had to do one little cleanup. But yeah, that, that property at two fifty-two and two fifty-two and a half Terrible Road is clean. So one down.
One down and like, I think four more to go, but all, all good. We also had our, our new code enforcement officer, John Yakovino. He was able to attend our first code enforcement meeting, and I think probably in the next month or two, he'll take his seat at the table and start resuming responsibilities as our new code enforcement officer. Just a quick recap on some of the citations that were issued for the month of September. Public Works issued a total of one thousand three hundred and sixty-eight dollars in citations. And Building and Health combined also issued a total of one thousand four hundred and four dollars in citations. On the Building and Health side, for the month of September, so far, we've only collected three hundred and twenty-eight dollars of that. But that's not necessarily a bad thing. We do not issue tickets to build up our general fund. We do issue tickets to gain compliance, and we are seeing that that's having the desired result as our code enforcement partners are out there giving warnings, sending letters, and then issuing citations. So, you know, mission is being accomplished here. Real quick, just moving on to the Police Commission. This past month, Chief Gould brought to the Police Commission his new event, special event policy. And that's now in place. And I just want to say, great job to Chief Gould and the command staff that helped him put that together. We have, which is good news, we've had an increase in special events, such as road races. And the, the policy that had been in place for a while just basically only accommodated the, the small number of special events. Now, it's a good thing. Our community has a lot more of these road races and special events fundraisers that require assistance from the Police Department and Public Works. And so we now have a new policy. And that does go into effect as of January first.
Great. Thanks. Any other Committee Reports that we might have missed? No? Okay, what's that? Sebastian, did you have any Committee Reports?
Sure, just sorry. Very briefly, Cemetery Commission hosted their lantern tours the last weekend of September. So that was two years on the trot of a rain date, but we had full schedules for both days. Folks really enjoyed it. Big thanks to our volunteers, our lantern holders, CERT, the Historical Society, very great effort there. They got to see the eagle that was taken down in late September, which is being worked on. So thanks to some of our Corporation Council, Tom, worked on some of the communication there. And that's going to be a month-long process to restore the eagle. We're going to try and do some more work on the, the Civil War Monument there in West Cemetery. So that's an ongoing project. Also, the Library Board is working on a strategic plan, so we'll have our vision and our goals on one document to share with the community. We have a draft form now, but we're continuously working on it. So that's more to come.
Great, thanks. And Jackie, you'll be next.
I do not have any reports, Mayor.
All right, Andrew?
Just one from the Parks Department. Superintendent Maderos and Assistant Superintendent Sarah Larson are at the National Recreation and Park Association Conference. For the second year in a row, his department has been recognized as one of the top four agencies in the country, serving populations of thirty-five thousand to seventy thousand. The Bristol Public Youth was notified as a finalist for the twenty-three National Gold Medal Award for Excellence in the Park and Recreation Management in April, and winners of the Grand Plaque Award will be announced at the annual conference in Dallas, which is going on right now. In advance of the award ceremony, the, the Parks Department created a five-minute video that you can find on their Facebook page.
Thank you, Andrew. All right, now any others? No? All right, we'll move on to number seven, which is old business. Do we have any old business? Not aware of any. Any new business? No. Hearing none. We will go to number nine, which is resignations. Erica?
We have two, Joseph Calata from the Zoning Commission and Desiree Powell from the Diversity Council. She was a Section two dash nine.
Through the Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the resignations and have letters sent to them thanking them for their service.
Thank you. And the second is Rosengren. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. So very unique situation here with those two resignations. We were unable to fill them, but we only have, I think, two other openings. So we are pretty full on our boards and commissions, and we are constantly looking for boards and commissioners. As a matter of fact, one of those resignations, I will tell you, is unfortunately, we sometimes get hamstrung by minority representation on these boards. So we're always looking for people that want to serve. So anybody that has not put their name in or sent us an email that wants to serve on boards and commissions, please do that, and we will continue to try to fill those as appropriately as possible. We do have one appointment tonight, and that is for the Deputy Treasurer. So we have hired a new Deputy Treasurer, and I'll entertain a motion to appoint Ryan Bradley to the Office of Deputy Treasurer, and that will be effective ten, eleven, two thousand and twenty-three.
Move approval.
Second.
Tebow and Panayato. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? That motion carries. All right, we are done with appointments. We are going to move to item number eleven. I'm going to ask Ms. Tebow to go ahead and do that one because there's a slight misprint on the actual announcement.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to award Contract two C twenty-four dash zero one two Kern Park Improvements in the amount of two hundred fifteen thousand eight hundred dollars and to the contractor Stonehedge Landscaping Company, LLC, and to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to affect said contract.
Great, we have a motion.
Second.
Second for Tyler. So yeah, that was what was missing on there was Stonehedge Landscaping LLC, so that'll be noted in the minutes. But a proper motion and a second. This is actually one of those ARPA projects. Kern Park is something that has lingered for many years. I'm proud to say that I was a very active participant at Kern Park for many years, and we were using the ARPA money to move that forward. So that will now be a passive recreation park, and that work's getting done. Great work by our Parks Department. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Number twelve, to approve a resolution establishing a senior volunteer tax relief program for senior citizens who volunteer their services to qualifying entities in the city. A motion to approve.
So it's a resolution.
Oh, it is a resolution too, so.
Can I make a motion to, I'd like to make a motion to waive the reading of the revolution, the resolution.
Yeah, we don't want a revolution.
A revolution.
Their seniors would be very upset. So Howe had the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. All right, now we will do the motion to approve. Can we have that from somebody?
Don't move.
Howe?
Jackie.
Jackie, I have a second.
Oh, Jackie, I didn't hear Jackie. Okay, I'm trying to help them because it's hard to see on the new dais. Great, we have a motion and a second, and this is really just a reapproval of something that's been existing, so we have to do that every year. Anybody have any comments or questions on it? This is a roll call vote, so go ahead, Erica, when you're ready.
Councilmember Howe?
Yes.
Councilmember Olson?
Yes.
Councilmember Panayoto?
Yes.
Councilmember Rosengren?
Yes.
Councilmember Tebow?
Yes.
And Councilmember Tyler?
Yes.
And Mayor?
Yes. Motion carries. All right, number thirteen. So on number thirteen, a little bit of explanation on this one. So New England Edibles is a company that is looking to do an establishment that is going to be a manufacturer slash distributor of edible project, products through cannabis establishment. We do allow these to happen through our debate process. There is not a limit to these, but we do have a very strict ordinance on how these things come forward. And so they had asked to get on the agenda because they had one more little tick mark from the state of Connecticut, and that was to get their social equity plan approved, which they expected to get approved on Friday. And unfortunately, they did not get their equity plan approved. So they are asking us to go ahead and table this to the next meeting, and hopefully they will get that very soon. I see Nick is on the line as well. So thank you, Nick, for attending, but I will entertain a motion to table item number thirteen.
So moved.
Panayato has the move, and Olson has a second. Very good.
Through the Chair?
Yep, go ahead.
I just wanted to add that their products are not for sale to the general public there. It's not retail. In case anybody was wondering, their customers are going to be other, just, you know, retail stores or hybrid stores in the state.
Yep, so they don't sell directly. They are just going to take the product and make it into edibles, which are available in most other states, but the cannabis laws, because it's not federally approved, you have to recreate all of these mechanisms in every single state. So we're starting to see those businesses pop up. The other reason that I do want to mention that it's good that we brought this forward and we allowed them to do that, even though they did not have that, is I want the Council in particular to keep in mind that we might run into these situations where we might need to do a special meeting for one of these potential businesses. And so I think it's much better for the public to know that it's there. And so then now if we have to do a special meeting, at least the public was notified that we are going to go ahead and talk about this because these have been highly debated topics over time. All right, so we're good with thirteen. Let's move on to number fourteen, which is to authorize the-
We have to vote to table it, though.
Oh, did we not vote? I didn't do the vote. I did all that talking. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Now we're going to go on to fourteen, which is to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to provide a letter of endorsement for Mr. Bhagesh Patel's application for a one-point-one-million-dollar brownfield remediation, really a loan grant-type program through the Nagatuck Valley Council of Governments for environmental cleanup activities of Forty West Street, which is formerly known as the Chick Miller Chevrolet. So we do need a motion first. We'll talk about it a little bit.
I'll motion it twice.
Second.
Andrew Howe and Cheryl Tebow. So this is really pretty exciting. I think the, the date that that property was purchased by Bhagesh Patel was two thousand and seven. So this is a longstanding blighted property. Mr. Patel has been up on his taxes. Every time we go after them for any type of code enforcement, which a lot of times is just tall grass, they clean it up right away. So through a lot of negotiation work and great effort for the Nagatuck, Nagatuck Valley COG, which were part of that region of government, they have gone through the paperwork process. And to be honest, this letter is a little bit more of a formality now because we have to approve everything through the Council. So that is moving through the process, and we do expect that he will get approved for this grant as soon as that happens. I will let everybody know. And we do expect that things will start to move forward, and we will take that building down, which I think is going to make every single citizen in this city very happy. So I'm excited to sign that letter, but it's well on its way, and hopefully we get to see some results pretty quickly. Any other comments or questions from the group? It's about time. Yes, I like that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Is there anybody opposed? Motion carries. All right, we are going to move on to fifteen, which I see Roger here, and this is another one that has not come to fruition yet. So I'm just going to ask for a motion to go ahead and table number fifteen.
So moved.
Second. Tyler, Rosengren. All those in favor?
Aye.
Is anybody opposed? That motion carries. All right, so we are moving on to our executive session. I'll ask Attorney Kurwicky, who will come into executive session?
It'll be the Assessor, Tom Dano, and our office staff.
Okay, and plus the Council. We'll move off to one of our meeting rooms over here.
Mayor, we've decided to use the, the furthest meeting room on the right-hand side.
I, I think that one's four, but just go all the way out.
All the way to the end.
We need a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
I gave it to Rosengren. All right, Tebow, Rosengren. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. All right, so before we come out of executive session, I just want to remind everybody here in the audience that there were no votes taken in executive session. I'll entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Rosengren got the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? And I think Jackie, you have the first one, which is item number sixteen.
I do.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry. You have five seventy?
Yes, five seventy.
Sixteen. Sebastian, we'll go in order. Sorry. Go ahead, Sebastian.
I move that the matter of SBK LLC v. City of Bristol Superior Court Docket Number HHB-CV-20-6059735-S be resolved by stipulation to judgment, which authorizes the assessor to adjust the two thousand and nineteen grand list value of the property to three hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars, and further to authorize the Corporation Council to execute the stipulation to judgment.
Second. Second for Howe. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Number seventeen. Now you, Jackie.
I move that the matter of five seventy Main Street LLC versus City of Bristol Superior Court Docket Number be resolved by stipulation to judgment, which authorizes the assessor to adjust the two thousand and nineteen grand list value of the property to three hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, and further to authorize the Corporation Council to execute the stipulation to judgment.
Second.
Second, we're going to give it to Sebastian. All right, all those in favor, Sebastian?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. No other business to come before us.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Got it. All those in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everybody.